What's that? Well, that's, well, there, yeah.
All right, ready to go?
Good evening, everyone. The time is now 6:01 PM. Today is Monday, July 24th, and this meeting is called order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brusher.
Here.
Councilmember Coyle. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Patel. Councilmember Patel. Councilmember Pointer.
Present.
Councilmember Ship Freeman.
Here.
Madam Clerk, adequate notice, please.
Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, has been provided by non-annual notice sent to the Holland News Tribune, Star Ledger, and Sentinel, Desi Talk on December 1st, 2022, and post domain law being municipal complex on the same date.
Thank you. Before we get started, just an item for the agenda. Item 13B under the Department of Law is being pulled from tonight's agenda. So, once again, 13B under the Department of Law is being removed from tonight's agenda. At this point, I'd like to open up for the Resolution of Recognition. Madam Clerk, please read.
Whereas Sir Natal to Mama, an Edison resident who is the founder of a nonprofit, Recycle My Battery, received a 2022 Gloria Baron Prize for Young Heroes. The Baron Prize annually honors 25 outstanding young leaders. He was one of the top 15 winners to receive $10,000 to support his service work. He has also been awarded CNN Heroes Young Wonder Award. Whereas at the age of 10, this young man came to the understanding that batteries are a central part of our world because they are so incredibly useful. He learned of a fire that took place at a landfill, and through his inquisitive mind and research, learned that the fire was due to the chemicals in lithium batteries that were thrown away. He decided he needed to do something to help Mother Earth. And whereas three billion batteries are thrown away each year and due to lack of knowledge and difficulty finding locations to recycle, our Earth is being contaminated. He is also known as Battery Boy, created a nonprofit called Recycle My Battery, where he educates people about the damages that batteries can do to our Earth and has many locations for battery drop boxes like schools, libraries, et cetera. Whereas Natal sought and received permission from Edison Superintendent of Schools to place a collection bin in each of the Edison's 19 schools. In the past three years, Natal has built a team of 250-plus student volunteers across the world helping to save our Earth. His organization operates in the U.S. and expanding to Canada, Switzerland, and India. Now, therefore be resolved by the Municipal Council of Edison Township desires to recognize the achievement for his countless volunteer hours and dedication for helping preserve our Earth and community with tireless efforts.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public for any comments.
Yes. On this resolution.
For the Resolution of Recognition. CNN, can I get a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close public portion.
Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
At this time, can I get a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, second.
At this time, I'd like to open up to the council for any council comments. Councilmember Brusher?
I've been following this young man here for quite some time now, and I do appreciate the initiative that he took. It seemed to come strictly from himself. It wasn't like an outcry. He seen a problem, and he decided that he was going to do something about it. And that does speak highly of how you were raised, and your parents, and the school that you attended. So, I, congratulations. I think you've done a wonderful job, and it's a great idea, and I hope it just expands, you know, throughout the rest of the world.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other?
Yes, Council President.
Vice President Harris.
Yes, this is such an impressive initiative, and it's so essential. I own an electric vehicle, and I'm made aware of the fact that it's not so simple as, oh, electric, that you're saving emissions and all of that, because then there's the whole issue of what to do with these lithium batteries when you're no longer using the car. And I know the flammable status. I've been getting some emails about this, just from other people, that these are highly, highly flammable and toxic. And so, this initiative of yours is absolutely superb, and I congratulate you and for not just Edison, but on behalf of the world, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other? Yes, Councilwoman Patel?
Anil, I think there are going to be future problems that will need, these big problems, the climate change that's coming, will need big solutions, and I think you have the right thinking. You have to solve the big problems, and you're doing it now at such a young age, and you have a bright future. Just keep solving the world's big problems, and you'll do great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you so much. I know.
I'm really proud, I'm really proud that you're from Edison, New Jersey, and I have been following you, like, on CNN and Channel 12. Every time, you know, I come up and your name comes up, and I'm, like, sticking my chest out, I let every one of my friends know, he's from Edison. This guy is a superstar, and you're going to hear more great things from him as the future goes on. So, remember his name, because he will be very important to our future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And for myself, I remember several years ago, when I was on the Environmental Commission, I believe you guys came in to actually say that you were going to put your first recycle box at the Edison Library, if I recall correctly. So, it's really tremendous to see the growth of the program over, shoot, it's probably about four or five years now, if I recall correctly. So, while many people may just be getting attuned to this now, the fact is that the groundwork has been laid out for years. So, for that, I commend you for your consistency, your vision, your forward-looking vision in regards to this, and the great job that you and your organization and all the volunteers, everyone that have achieved over the past several years. Also, thank you to the parents, because without their guidance, like, you know, there wouldn't be as much drive, so thank you to the parents as well. At this time, I'd like to ask Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brusher.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ship Freeman.
Yes.
Councilperson Pointer.
Yes, and at this time, I'd like to welcome Councilman Patel to the front to offer the resolution.
Ni-hao. So, I just want to say, there's always a worry in me about the future generation, but if there are kids like you in the next generation, I'm not worried. I think we will tackle the climate change, and we will solve any problems that we will face. So, thank you for being active, and thank you for participating in everyday issues. Visual, definitely have a big impact down the road. Thank you, Ni-hao.
Thank you so much for your kind words, and thank you so much for your support throughout my journey. It's because of you guys I've been able to expand recycling my battery to just such a big level. So, thank you so much, Edison, and thank you so much to all of you guys and your team for your help and support throughout the years.
Anytime, and if you need anything else, you know where to reach us. We're right here, every Monday.
Thank you again. At this time, I'd like to open up for oral petitions and remarks, starting from the list. Mr. Lauffler.
Thank you. I'd just like to say it's great that the council...
Before the time starts, I must ask name and address out of...
Ron Lauffler, 6 Nancy Circle.
I appreciate it, thank you.
That the council is recognizing our younger generation and our school kids. I think it's fantastic. I'm actually here to speak about 13B, what's been pulled today, the ordinance regarding the definitions of warehouse, fulfillment center, distribution center. And I figured I could come here, and I have a lot of experience, sadly, regarding this. So, doing some research regarding warehouses, distribution centers, and fulfillment centers. Warehouses are typically for storage. Distribution centers are for retail, and fulfillment centers are for consumers. And our current codes are absent any terminology except for warehouse and truck terminal. And we are on the course to add additional terminology and definitions. The current permitted use of warehouse distribution is codified under the Edison Code 3733-1D, needs to be stripped of the nomenclature of distribution, as it seems to conflate distribution center into its definition. The current definition dates back to 1999. I forwarded the members of the council a letter that was written by an attorney during one of the planning board cases that we had in Edison, and it states, "Most important is the language, the plain language of Section 3733-1D, which lists as a permitted use of the LI District, warehousing-distribution facilities for products or materials that..." but not including truck terminals as defined. Thus, the ordinance does not treat warehousing and distribution as separate uses, but rather as interrelated ones. Accordingly, the consistent practice in Edison has been to use the terms warehouse and distribution interchangeably. Indeed, in Edison, I'm sorry, indeed Edison's Light Industrial and Raritan River Redevelopment District zones are full of buildings approved and developed as warehouses, which are used for warehousing, distribution, and some for a combination of both. This practice is consistent with the discussion of the term warehouse, and there's a complete illustrated book of development definitions that we have not adopted as a township, but it quotes to that. So, it concludes with, "As such, by referring to the proposed building as a warehouse, an applicant in no way excludes distribution as a possible use of the building." I'm sorry.
If we do not pause this time? Never mind.
It was my fault.
Sorry.
So, I hope when this goes back on, we're able to strip distribution from warehouse and keep distribution facility and fulfillment center in their own categories where they are and where they are not allowed in. I guess where the mayor and hopefully the council intended to be in Raritan Center and Heller Industrial Park, in the industrial park zones that need 25 acres or more. So, thank you for listening. Does anybody need a copy of the letter for their records? No, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Diamond.
Bruce Diamond, 74, Calvert, Edison. Department of Law B, again, I realize it's been pulled for this evening, but I think Ron is on the right track. We're trying to dial in to be more finite, so we don't wind up with surprises. With GNH, I'd love to understand what those are all about and what they mean, and what's the purpose of them, under 13.
In short, because the county is getting state funding through it, the state is requiring a conservation easement of essentially the entire property in perpetuity.
Oh, the free... This has nothing to do with the property that Shay still owns? This is the Shay property that we bought?
Yeah, as part of the Battle of Short Hills.
And the same with, with, with the... Okay, so it's not, we're not giving anybody right-of-ways or anything like that?
No, it's mandatory, to my understanding, from the state in regards to, essentially, the entire property would remain as an easement in perpetuity.
Thank you.
Considered perfectly. Thank you. We are off the list. Anyone from the public that wish to speak? Mr. Basov?
Thank you. Joel Basov, 17, Beach Lane. First of all, it's very heartwarming to see this young man receive such a meaningful award for such essential work, so it really does make us all proud to be sharing the same town with such dedication. I came here to address the issue of warehouses. The real concern is, how much traffic will a storage facility generate? And the real distinction in terms of the truck traffic that would be generated is whether it's a warehouse whose purpose is storage of inventory or product, and a facility that's designed for moving goods, whether it's classified as distribution or fulfillment or truck terminal, that really doesn't matter for the person who has trucks rumbling past his or her house maybe 24 hours a day. So, it's really vital that the definitions, rather than attempting to try to track, say, definitions that might be in the Moskowitz Treatise, it's really important that the definitions address what the concerns of Edison's residents are, and that's to make sure that you don't have trucks rumbling through residential neighborhoods at all hours of the day or idling next to residential neighborhoods. So, when the definitions are crafted, it's vital that it make a distinction between warehouses, on one hand, that are for storage, and on the other hand, it's okay to conflate distribution centers, fulfillment centers, and truck terminals, because those are the facilities that generate the truck traffic and that really impact the residential neighborhoods. And in terms of that, it's probably worth considering to make sure that there is a clear distinction between the storage of goods and the movement of goods. Maybe consider setting a maximum number of truck bays or loading bays that a facility could have before it goes from being a warehouse to either a fulfillment center, a distribution center, or a truck terminal. Maybe if it's eight bays or fewer, you can presume that the facility is mostly for storage. If it's got more than that, and certainly if it has substantially more than that, it's going to generate a lot of truck traffic at a lot of hours of the day, and that's a distinction that I think will be important to preserving the quality of life of Edison's residents, many of whom have the circumstances of either living adjacent to where these facilities might go, or living on streets that the trucks will have to pass through to get to these facilities. And finally, there was an item about an organization that has a contract for obtaining grants, Millennium, I think it was. I saw that there were two items. One is for a cost overrun, and the other is, I guess, to renew the contract for the upcoming 12 months. And I was just wondering if there's any quantification... any quantification as to how much they've produced in grants.
Just to address the first item is for emergency appropriations, which are really towards the FEMA applications, the second resolutions towards their normal grant writing operations. If I recall the number correctly, I think it was about four and a half million that they've gotten us over like the past three or four years, something like that?
I believe actually in the last two years, we've accumulated about 4.5 million. I can get that number for you. I usually get a monthly report just to tell me exactly what's in queue, what's been done, and let you know exactly what are the grants that we've applied for in any upcoming.
Well, it sounds like they've been productive. I just wonder, though, since there are so many grants for the township to go after, and since it is so important to our revenues, if it makes sense to have someone in-house to pursue grants full-time, I wonder if we could leverage it even more. So, I don't know whether it would be worthwhile or not, but it's just something perhaps to think about. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers from the audience or the attendance? See none. Can I get your motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close public portion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public portions, oral petition remarks is now closed. Six, review of minutes. We have the work session of January 23, combined meeting of March 23, combined meeting of April 24, work session of May 8, and regular meeting of May 10. Any comments or questions from council members? Councilman Brecher?
Yes, I believe I missed a meeting in there. Since this was from so long ago, I don't remember the date. So, I can just abst...
They're just abstaining during the vote. Thank you. All my stuff just disappeared. Next, we'll go to reports from all council committees. I'll start to my right. Councilman Brecher?
None at this time, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Vice President Harris?
Yes, I'll start with Cultural Arts Committee. Meeting was held on July 11, and the items that we would discuss were the fact that Tracy Parker is helping us get a digital presence now. We are now on the council website, I mean, on the town website. With regard to the gallery that's downstairs, that we're going to be putting out applications for people to be able to present and show in the gallery. We have several themes. I think the first one that has been decided, this is Mayor Joshi, had urged us to put something out on the Thomas Edison, so that will be the first one. With regard to the Ferrante House, it is expected to be ready for the fall. And there was talk in our meeting about Halloween, having some, hosting some kind of events for Halloween, maybe doing some kind of history of ghosts and involve school and children in the presentation, and that that could be a real, something that could attract a lot of the people of Edison. Looking for mural locations to be put up around the town. And we also, while we are looking to officially get a logo, we have a decal that I believe it was someone who, both the chairman, Tony and his wife Diana, Tony Masero and Diana, that friend of theirs made a decal that we can use. It says the gallery. It's a nice design, and it's going to be at least something we can keep temporarily. The target date, I believe, the ribbon cutting for the gallery downstairs is now Friday, August 4. And actually, if I may ask you, Lois, do you... What time is that supposed to be?
Yeah, I think it might get pushed back. So, what do you think?
Oh, it might be pushed back from the 4th? Okay. What? No, okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry. Apparently not. Sorry. All right. I'll try to get that information to you. The last I heard it was going to be August 4, but it sounds like there might be some delay with that. That's the report for cultural arts. Library Board, held the same day, July 11. And discussion items were the summer reading program is here. They've had a great attendance for it so far. The Claire Barton presentation was held on the 15th of July, giving a history of the Claire Barton neighborhood. Bookmobile update, July, August, the schedules are out. North Edison Branch Construction Project, there are some air conditioning issues at Charlie Brown, at Charlie Brown's, sorry, Claire Barton, and the North Branch. The, let's see, promoting, something about schools promoting library, promoting library cards. And we're looking to get out about 15,000 to 17,000, get out 15,000 to 17,000 library cards. The North Branch Construction is moving along. Personnel, the non-union contracts are in review right now. Strategic Planning Committee granting proposals have been discussed. Resolution to establish a bank of $600 for starter bills, cash for the new self-checkouts for the purpose of making change for payments, that was passed. Right now, the North Branch is to have three, the main branch two, and the Claire Barton one. Resolution to approve the professional contract for architectural services with Arcaria and Iovino for the renovation of the main central library branch in the amount of $149,000. That was passed. Museum passes was passed. And these museum passes is something that this is a feature I was not aware of, but there are a limited number of museum passes for some of the New York City museums and some of the local New Jersey museums. And these are loaned out. I think you have to make an appointment to get them. I can get you some more information on that. But this is a very good program. And the proposed budget was also passed. So, the next meeting is also going to be Tuesday, August, it's August 8. It says August 9, but I believe it's the same date as our, as the Cultural Arts Commission meeting, so August 8. Because Councilman Coyle is not here, we had our first public safety meeting. That was this past Friday, the 21st, at 6:30 PM. And we had reviews from Chief Toth. The costs for the EFD were up $200,000. The volunteers have been down. We've said the EFD has saved $55,000 on clothing. 27 firefighters have been hired. The first two female firefighters were hired. Station number one is being redone. It goes all the way back to 1916. Apparently, the doors are not wide enough at this point. And there's talk of, I think there's talk about relocating Engine 2 to Raritan Center. There are, on the current list of people, of prospective firefighters, five people are left on the list, including one female. We're hoping for a grant for 10 people. The current staff is 143, and the next test is being offered in November. From Chief Brian from the EPD, 13 new hires recently, 50 had retired. On August 1, five are going to the academy. New promotions are impending. Two sergeants are staffing an anti-crime unit, and about three are for higher crime areas. Right now, we have 184 officers, one retiring on August 1. The goal is eventually to get to 200 officers, and that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President Harris. Councilman Patel?
So, for open space, I did not attend the July 6 meeting, but they did discuss open space and trails, woodland app, the properties in Ferrante Shea, Stevens, and Petit. They also discussed Barnes Preserve Trail. We're progressing. As of March, in the trust fund, we have $1 million. And in terms of the Edison Bicycle Initiative, there was an update that I will give now. I met with Robert Deal and Mr. Rayno this past week. We discussed updating our maps first to capture exactly where we want the bypass under the power trails before we approach PSCNG, to ask them exactly where we're hoping for a productive meeting, where we're hoping for those paths to go. And that will be a productive meeting, hopefully. And I'm going to meet with engineering in this upcoming weeks to see where they got into in terms of that map. For billboard committee, there has been a delay, as we've been distracted by master plan and the budgets, but we will get back to it in about three weeks. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. Councilwoman Shifreeman?
Well, Monday, they had a review of the, last Monday, I think it was last Monday, yes, the review of the master plan. And there were a lot of people from Claire Barton that was displeased with things within the master plan, and they were led to know that it wasn't written in stone yet, that there still is a little bit, you know, a room with it. So, they're not completely, you know, voting on it already. And I also had a meeting with the Jazz Committee, which I have every two weeks, and everything is going so far so well. We're going to have to have a stage and some restrooms. And I spoke to some people on that information, and if they can help me, Jay Elliott said that he would help me move to the next direction, so that's good. And also, on the housing, on the housing, they're still looking around and waiting on stuff so they can start the building and start the redoing of the old, old, old apartments that they are, start renovating that. And also, a lot of people that are looking for affordable housing, they gave me a list so that when people ask me, I can receive that type of information from them. I mean, I can give out information to people who are, because there's a lot of people looking for affordable housing now. And there's no way you do, you don't jump the line. You have to take, you have to go and you have to fill out papers, and there's a host of different places that you would be able to go. And also, Saturday, they had a health fair for all the people in North Edison, everybody. It was a good thing happening there, because I learned a lot of stuff about the different programs they even have for pets, you know, like pets, homeless pets. They even have programs for homeless pets. So, they were doing that. And they were also showing, which I thought was awesome, that they have these mobile screening for people who are unable to get to doctors and get to other places, because everybody knows that if you get it real early, screenings are that much more important. So, I thought that was really good, that they pressed that forward the whole time. And homeownership to folks who just on the edge, but don't think they are able to do it, but as they move on, and they help them, they have people to help them, that they'd be able to transition themselves from apartments into housing. And I thought that was also a great thing. And then other than that, they had like health stuff for them to do and learn more about your heart. And the community policing unit was there, and it was food and everything in case, you know, you needed some food, or like, you know, different things you needed. So, they were there 100%. So, it was really a great day, and it was a good time with the Housing Authority completely. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shifreeman. And for myself, no updates, except that at the August Monday meeting, I believe the Smart City Advisory Committee will be providing a presentation to the council. This time, move on to points of light. Any points of light from council members?
Yes, Council President?
Council Vice President Harris?
Thank you. Several. I wanted to point out that right now on the third floor, the Edison Art Society has a, oh, I forgot to bring in the brochure. The latest exhibit is actually a husband and wife team who are originally from Portugal. And they both have exhibits in there. The gentleman has these carve-out, wooden carve-outs. It's really beautiful, beautiful work. And his wife has these beautiful watercolors. And so, I would urge people to go up to the third floor and take a look. Speaking of the Edison Art Society, just to mention that Gloria Dittman is going to be stepping down as director. She's been director, I believe, for about 25 years, but she's stepping down at year's end. We had the first annual Eid Festival, which was wonderful attendance, especially in spite of the really inclement weather that we had. We had some real flash flooding kinds of situations, but it did clear up for a period of time. And it was extremely well-attended, all things considered. Also, Hands of Hope, they had a barbecue and health fair, and the health fair had health screenings. And these were pretty comprehensive health screenings for blood work and blood pressure and all of that. And that was extremely well-attended. Councilwoman Shifreeman, the name Jackie, who was the original director of that, do you know her last name?
Can't think of it right now.
Yeah. What is it?
Vadesky.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. She was presented with a citation from President Biden for all her good works when she was, for such a long time, chairing the Hands of Hope. And now, of course, Commissioner Charlie Tamaro, it's in very capable hands with him. So, this is a terrific organization. Finally, the Junior Police Academy had their ceremony a couple of weeks ago. I think it was a couple of Fridays ago. The next one is going to be Friday, August 4. And I can't remember which, this is whatever the next level up is from the Junior Police Academy. So, that ceremony is going to be on August 4, I believe, at 1 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other points of light?
Just one item that is going to be upcoming in August, August 26, is the Edison House Music Festival, starting at 12 PM at Lake Papiani. Any other points of light?
Actually, yes, there is the one more. I believe it's the National Night Out is next Tuesday, correct?
Yeah.
And I don't remember the times.
August 1.
Right. Tuesday, August 1.
I think it's 6 PM, but I'm not 100% sure.
At Lake Papiani, at the Papiani Park. So, hope to see a lot of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, nine, the 2023 calendar year municipal budget and solid waste budget. The public hearing is set for this Wednesday, July 26. Ten, from the Business Administrator. A resolution awarding contract purchase order for furniture and accessories not to exceed $286,295. B, resolution increases permissible expenditures to Millennium Strategies to obtain disaster recovery grants and administrative professional services. $55,000 total contract, $80,000. C, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for materials not to exceed $55,000. D, resolution awarding contract purchase order for maintenance and support of township's network and Wi-Fi infrastructure. $16,382. E, resolution awarding 48-month lease for the furnishing of one multifunctional copier. $16,800. And F, resolution authorizing professional services contract to Millennium Strategies for grant research, writing, and management services. $72,000. Any questions, concerns, or comments? Council President? Yes, Councilwoman Shifreeman?
The resolution accepting bid and awarding a contracted continental hardware for the materials not to exceed $55,000. I thought we were getting stuff from Lowe's.
We get materials from various places. So, attached to the backup, there, this is between the Sewer and Water Department and DPW. So, this is for pipes, valves, thrust block angles, water mains. So, and that deals with our manholes and repair work that needs to get done. With regard to DBW, again, if you look at the...
I can look at it, but I'm just saying that it's continental, is the only place we can get those things you named from? Like Lowe's doesn't have them?
We like to have options, Councilwoman.
And as far as Millennial is concerned, I am very good with them, because I know we tried over and over again. tried over and over again to get an in-house person, and way back when I started, Millennium has always, Millennium has always been very great at looking for grants, and you give them, if you tell them, just scale it down and tell them what you want, they've been very, very good with it, so I'm very, very happy with Millennium. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Rusher?
Yes, I was wondering about, well, Millennium, they have done good work, they brought us more than we've paid to them, so I acknowledge that. I just don't understand the need for this disaster recovery grants. Like currently, we don't have, do we have any kind of disaster recovery?
That's exactly with what Millennium does for us, they recover FEMA for us, so with this, they've been a lot more aggressive in obtaining those grants for us and those fundings.
For, for, can you give me an example?
Ida, for example, is one of the continuous disaster recoveries that we've been working on, so sometimes it just takes a couple of years to actually go through the process of reporting and getting the work done. So with that, we have to report to FEMA very often.
Okay, now, so we hire Millennium to go out and get us grants in general?
Correct.
Like, I'm looking at it in a little simpler mode. You know, if you hired me to say repair all your automobiles, and then you gave me one here that said that I want you to repair fire trucks, the question is, why? Like, why wouldn't they just be under all their grants?
They're two separate contracts, one's for disaster recovery and the other one is for general grants administration.
Well, I, I, yes, that's exactly what you did, and my question is, why? Like, let me ask you this, under regular grants, they get grants for solar panels, right? Why not give them a separate contract for a grant for the animal shelter? Why not give them a separate, you know, contract for grants for road repair? Like, so this one item, F incorporates all kinds of grants, but B is just one little grant, why didn't we hire the company to do all the grants together? That's my question. It's similar to what my council colleague brought up about, you know, I guess, we can go to Lowe's and we can get the parts, right? Or we can go to other companies and we're doing a bunch of them, but I'm just saying, why wasn't incorporated to begin with, B into F initially? Is that just to keep the bid threshold down?
When we do FEMA work, we can actually get reimbursed for the work that they've done, so that's part of the distinction between the two. I'm sorry, Council President.
Oh, okay, so let me get this straight. So F is for them to do the grants, B is for them to do the applications and put that together, because in the past, they didn't do that, correct? Under the prior administration, I believe Andy Toth actually did a lot of the recovery money from FEMA.
I can't speak to what was done before, I just know what we're doing now.
Okay, could you find out?
Sure.
Who did this in the past administration? Because then this would be an added cost to our budget now with this administration. Like, if Andy Toth put it together, when we do the relief money, and he did that for whatever it was, the last 10 years, 15, whoever did it, I believe it was Andy, now we're gonna pay another company, an outside company, to do it. So can you find out who did that for us in the past?
Sure.
That's all. Okay, and, I, okay, I'll wait.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rusher. Yes, Councilwoman Patel.
I am interested how we did it before, and can we also find out how much money we recovered before we had Millennium, to see what that difference is?
Millennium.
But before.
That's years and years, because I was here with Millennium. Four years ago, we had Millennium.
Sonya, the question is, for B, is that something new, or do we do this, that's the FEMA recovery stuff? Is that something new, or we always did that?
My, for Millennium with the FEMA recovery? I apologize, there's a feedback here. We've, my understanding, we've always done it, even before, prior administrations, for FEMA recovery.
And that was with Millennium?
I believe so.
Okay, so this is nothing new?
I don't believe it is new.
Thank you.
And I guess first, any other questions or comments? And my understanding in regards for the emergency appropriations, which if we can get clarification on, when we did the sewer pump resolutions for the engineering part of that, there was a backup document that had where some of the funding would be, so my understanding was TNM was doing for the I-Bank applications, and then we were, three or four of them were through FEMA, so my presumption was that this was in conjunction with that, so if we can just get clarification.
Correct, they've been working on, again, part of Ida and the stormwater issues that we've been dealing with, the engineering groups, this is also, there are several vendors that are working on Ida and other disaster recovery issues.
I just, if we can just get a list of what applications they're working on, that would be helpful.
Sure, related to FEMA, outside of the general administration?
Yeah, outside of the general grant, I think we're all understanding the general work. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Sheffreyman.
Because the confusion is, is when Andy was here, Homeland Security was here, and FEMA was here, they were all behind the scenes, working together, so I believe the difference is they were gathering up information, maybe Andy and them were gathering up information, because you do have to be more specific with your grant writer, and let them kind of know, this is what we're looking for, these are the things that are important to us, so that, you know, because there's millions of grants all over the place, and you have to focus on exactly what you need for your type of community. I believe that's exactly what it is. Councilwoman Rusher?
Thank you.
Eleven, from the Department of Finance. A, report of disbursements through July 20th. B, resolution authorizing tax sales certificate refund, $455,500. C, resolution authorizing tax overpayment refunds, $6,009. D, resolution authorizing sewer overpayment refunds, $4,427. E, resolution authorizing successful tax court appeal refunds. F, resolution awarding contract purchase order for tax assessment software and postcards. G, resolution to amend 2023 municipal budget. And H, resolution to amend 2023 solid waste budget. Any questions, concerns, or comments?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Rusher?
Yes, with the amended budget, I did see we're reducing the number, but that would be to the taxpayers, correct? So can I get what, can we tell the public what we were going to raise it as a percentage in the budget before, and what percentage the budget is going up now?
We are now going to reduce the, or change the amount of the tax that is going to be levy. The only change on the budget is the surplus that we were going to take from the savings of the township. So the rate of the municipality was very difficult to change at this point, so because the state is giving us additional money, we have to reduce that amount, what we did is we just reduced the surplus.
Okay, so, okay, let me, so we got an additional, was it a million, two?
Correct.
So we got an additional million, two from the state, and you reduced the surplus by the million, two?
That's correct.
But isn't the surplus that you have there part of the overall budget that goes in to make up the tax levy for the residents?
No, the tax levy is made out of the line item that it says amount to be raised by taxation.
Okay, so let me, let me rephrase this. So when we did the budget presentation, right, we seen that, that we didn't capture 500,000 in the Latchkey program. We seen that there was 22 million that was spent in the police department, but we're gonna raise them to 25 million, I believe. So we have increases, right, and then we have dollars that we're not capturing, right, which will allow reserves and that to go up. And now we have an addition, additional a million, four that was unexpected, and we're not giving that back to the taxpayers?
No, sir, we are not giving the taxpayer back that money right now, because the budget is already introduced, so that's why it was proposed. The easiest way to modify a budget that is already balanced was to reduce the surplus that we were going to take. Remember, this surplus is again coming out at the remaining revenues of the prior years. This is like the savings that we have, that we were going to take from the prior years, so we could reduce the allocations for the, so we don't ask the taxpayers more money. But what we are doing is reducing that, because we receive more money from the state.
Okay, so in a nutshell, what I seen was the administration and the mayor gave us a budget that I felt was a little high, right, but that's an opinion. And then you came up with a million, four in extra money, and you're not gonna give that back to the taxpayers either. That's, in a nutshell, what you've just said, right? Taxpayers get nothing back, you're gonna still raise it the same amount.
Not at this point. Not at this point with this budget that the mayor is proposing, no. So the, the tax rate that the mayor had decided to keep is still the same, that whatever he presented in the, in his presentation, that's what is going to be kept.
Even though you got an extra million, four?
We have different buckets that change since February, so the points that you are bringing are things for discussion of reducing this and that, but at this point, the money that we receive from the grant, from the state, in addition that, of whatever we have anticipated, we took it from the surplus. So we reduce the surplus, so with the township have a little more caution on the surplus amount.
Okay, but basically, the tax rate is gonna be, the taxation to the residents is staying exactly the same, even though the township received an additional million, four?
Yes, Councilwoman Rusher, if I could just add, just for clarification, though, this is merely a proposed budget from the administration, ultimately, it's up to council to determine whether or not that million, four in surplus is allocated either for surplus or for any reduction in the overall budget. I mean, that's something that ultimately council will decide, not the administration.
Whether we approve it or not?
Correct, exactly, yeah. But it's also subject to the amendment process of council.
And that's, I just want to be clear.
That's the proposal, correct.
Right, I want to be clear that the administration gave us a budget that had everything that they wanted in it, and then they had received an additional million, four that was unexpected, or a million, two that was unexpected, and that's not going back to the taxpayers, they're just gonna keep that and hold that for more reserves later on, or whatever they're gonna do.
That's the proposal, correct.
Correct, that's the proposal. Okay, I just, that's where I was going, just wanted to get clear that we're not giving it back to the taxpayers, that's all.
Council President?
Well, just first, if there are any other...
No, I'm actually through. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Patel?
Lena, I had a question on if we were to amend the proposed budget, when can we actually introduce it? Because I understand that it will delay the process to at least September. Is that true?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so this is a way to make sure this budget gets implemented now? Okay. And then, actually, you can send another section. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I was just gonna say that whether they do it now or September, you know, is irrelevant, we've done them before in September, and I'm sure if we put it out as a referendum and ask the taxpayers, you know, we could reduce your taxes in half the increase, but you'd have to wait to get your bill until September. I think 95% of the taxpayers would like to see the reduction. And we could have done the budget in January, you know, so I don't know that an extra month or two matters, but that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just for clarification on my understanding in regards to the funds that are being allocated here, if you go on Sheet 11 to the overall, the overview of the budget, it has surplus anticipated, line item three is miscellaneous revenues, so the reduction in the surplus is being reduced down, but the line item under miscellaneous revenues is being increased, and that's why, to my understanding, there's no percentage difference between the two. Thank you. Sorry, 12, from the Department of Health. A, resolution authorizing refunds for Junior Police Academy. B, resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funding from the 2023-2024 New Jersey Department of Health Child and Adolescent Health Program, childhood blood exposure prevention in the amount of $95,000. And C, resolution authorizing purchase of two 2023 or newer Diamond Coach buses, $291,593. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Hearing none.
Council, Council President? This is, this is a grant that we're receiving for the $95,000, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's very good. And the same with the diamond buses, like, that's, you know, that's quite a bit of money, but I just wonder, do we have the CDL people to go along with the buses that we have?
I'll defer to the administration.
We do have bus drivers.
Okay. No, because I just noticed there's a shortage of CDL people, so I just wanted to make sure that we don't have things sitting somewhere and just waiting for someone with a license to drive them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Hearing none. 13, from the Department of Law. A, resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute agreement with New Jersey Transit for installation and maintenance of new bus shelter on Route 27. Again, item B is pulled from the agenda. C, ordinance authorizing the sale of two township properties known as Block 491.01, Lot 30, and Block 491.01, Lot 33. D, resolution designating property commonly known on the township tax map as Block 692.05, Lot 8.03, as an area in need of redevelopment condemnation pursuant to local redevelopment and housing law. E, resolution authorizing Township Planning Board to investigate whether properties commonly known on the tax map as Block 1131, Lot 23.13, AKA 2002 to 2006 Lincoln Highway, should be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. F, ordinance authorizing handicap parking sign at Resident G. Ordinance authorizing mayor to enter into deed of easement and declaration of covenants for Shea Track. And H, ordinance authorizing mayor to enter into deed of easement and declaration of covenants for the Fronte Track. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Councilman?
Yes, Councilwoman Patel?
For 13A, I just wanted a clarification, so what exactly is that? The NJ Transit, the bus shelter?
Like, at the bus stops, you know, like the big structures that...
So it's just a new bus stop?
Well, you know where like the seats are, and they have like the three-sided?
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Sorry, I thought it was a completely different thing, sorry, that's it.
Council President? Yes, Councilwoman Patel?
Yeah, on lines, item C here, do we know what's the size of these lots?
There are two lots, 25 by 100 deep, I believe, and a flank of 50-foot by 100-foot property.
They're being sold for 100,000 apiece.
Perfect, and are we putting any restriction on this, or?
Any restrictions?
My understanding from the backup is that it's contingent on the adjacent properties, that they would essentially be the only ones allowed to purchase it.
That's correct, it has to be a contiguous property.
Understood. The reason I'm bringing this one is, where is the buyer, if he buys this property, and we, once we approve this, will they be able to subdivide the lot and build the two houses there?
Yeah, I understand the question.
I, I understand where you're going with, I'm trying to think of what the property dimensions on the left and right were. I know the one on the right is on a corner of the roundabout, so I'd find it a little difficult to actually meet all the bulk requirements on the left. I don't think in that area that, and I'd have to confirm with the zone that it's in, but I think the minimum lot sizes wouldn't be fit, because if you have 120 divided by two, you got 60 by 100. If they're in a RA or RAA zone, I think you need a minimum 10,000 square feet, so I don't think you'd be able to, but...
Correct, you know, again, by the zone, they may not be, but they should not come back and apply saying, we have the hardship now because we own this property. So again, this is a ripple effect here, unless we put the deed restriction, they can't build anything, they can use the adjacent property for recreation purpose or put a... They can use the adjacent property for recreation purpose or put a green house, whatever they can use, or maybe additional parking for the house. And this has been happening in the past. The reason I'm asking this question typically, you know, I'm very vocal on this issue, and typically, we are asked to put a deed restriction, and here is why. If you don't do that, in a year, this, the same person will go in front of your zoning board asking for the devariance, saying, "We have the hardship now." And I should be able to build probably 3,000 square foot house, and here you go. In $200,000, we sold a lot, 3,000 square foot house, it's going to be million dollar, what did we get really?
I understand the concern. If we're able to possibly get clarification?
And I can wait till Wednesday. I'm not rushing now, but I can wait for the confirmation. Yep. If you can, please do the research on that. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
Counsel President, what Councilman Patel is saying, that there are a lot of residents that are screaming and yelling that these minor spaces are coming up, and then they're like, "I don't know why we have laws," because then they come back and they ask for all these variances. And so they afforded those variances, so I don't know. That's what, you know, that's what the constituents are telling me. They say, "Why do you have the actual laws if you're going to give out variance to people and, you know, let them misuse the land that we give, you know, that we sell to them?" I'm just relaying what your constituents are telling me.
And just for myself, I believe all subdivisions have to go through the planning board?
That's correct.
So it's a little bit of a different aspect than the zoning board, because I know that's where a lot of the complaints come from. Were there any other questions?
No, no, no. I just was, I just questioned, the reason why I questioned that, because every day, people are telling me there's, there won't be anything left but a blade of grass in Edison, because we're like overbuild, overkill. And as I discussed it earlier times, I have to, if it pours down rain tomorrow, I'll get a canoe, and then I'll just, you know, leave from my house, because when you're trying to go on certain places because of the overdevelopment in certain areas, it doesn't leave much for the flooding and, you know, the water going all over the place. So I'm just, you know, I'm just inundated with calls where people like are really, they said, they went to the place, five houses, then they went down to four houses, and they went down to three houses, then they back up to four houses. You know, it's very, very frustrating for the people of Edison. But it's more frustrating, I guess, for me, because, I mean, I used to pick blackberries here in the woods before over the overdevelopment, so I'm okay with it. I'm okay.
Any other questions, comments, or Councilman Brecher?
Counsel President, yes, it's the same line item at C. We've always put, since I've been here, we've put deed restrictions. And the concern is the same as my counsel colleague brought up, was that somebody's going to buy the lot for $100,000, or even $200,000. Go for a subdivision.
Maybe I'll just answer it now. Counsel Brecher, I'm sorry, and I was remiss that I didn't mention this earlier. Under Section D of the ordinance, it does restrict any further subdivision.
Oh, so there are, we're going to have no more?
No further subdivision whatsoever.
Under?
Under Section D on Page three of, I'm sorry, on the ordinance, Page two of the resolution, of the ordinance, Section D, there shall be no further subdivision of this property.
That's, that's very, that's very good.
Section D, in the ordinance. It's in the ordinance itself. My apologies for not referencing it earlier.
If I get you a lot, do you think you could look up the history? And let me tell you the concern. Around the corner from this lot, my son lived on 895 Ellis Parkway. I'll have to check that address, but it was like 895. And that area is predominantly like 100 by 100 lots or larger. My son's lot was 35 by 100. Up his side street, about four houses, there was a home that I was told, this is why I asked if there was a way for you to find this out, I was told that they purchased the land from the town, which happened to be about 35 feet by 100 foot. And the township said, "No, you can't build on it," because it's, it's not, and they went, and they went to court. And a court said that because the town sold you the property, right, they had to sell it with these covenants that you could build on it. So could you find that out to see if that, you know, if that were true?
Bit of a project. If you, I mean, if you have a specific property and you want me to...
That's what I mean. I can drive by tonight, get the exact address, right, so that you can look, because, I'll tell you why. If what happened was, they sold, the town sold the property, and then they went to court, and the court told them they could build on it, I don't feel comfortable in approving something, right, to sell.
But you don't know what, if there were any restrictions on that prior sale?
I, this is, this is where I'm, right, I don't know. And the only reason why I do know about this other house is that I went and spoke to the owners, because we were looking at tearing my son's house down and then putting up a home just like theirs, which is, it's different than all the other homes in the neighborhood. So that's what predicated me stopping by, you know, the home that they had.
I mean, I certainly think it's possible. It would be a certain amount of work. We'd have to look back at tax records, we may have to, if there's some sort of court case involved, we may have, and if it's, if it's not a recent court case, we'd have to go back and dig through records to find this case. I don't really understand, though, how that impacts your decision here in this, in this particular property sale, which doesn't, which clearly states that there can be no subdivision. That I'm a little confused, though, with the connection between the two.
Well, because that says clearly. Now, let's just say that that other deed clearly said that there would be no subdivision, right? And they went to the planning board, and the planning board said, "The deed clearly said no." And then you went and looked up the court case, right? What you're in essence doing by not looking into this would be allowing this person to go to court to build on it.
No. I don't, I don't see the connection between somebody, a property we don't know, a court case we don't know, a subdivision we don't know, how that impacts this situation, which requires that it cannot be subdivided in clearest, it can be stated in the ordinance. So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Council Brecher, I fail to see the connection, why me researching this property will give you better clarity on this particular property.
Because what I'm telling you is that they had the same deed restriction in there.
How do you know that? Because you didn't even know the address of the property.
No, because I know. See, but you don't know, and as the attorney, right, your job is to know. Your job is not to be dismissive of me and saying, "Let's just push this forward," because that's what I'm getting from you, David.
No, Council Brecher, you're asking me to go research your son's street. I don't see how that applies.
Right, I was going to get to, listen, hey...
I want to be helpful, I just want to, I just want to understand what the, what the purpose is, that's all.
Being helpful would be for you to say, "Listen, I'll look at it. If there was a deed restriction, and they went to court, and the court overturned it, I'm going to let everybody on the council know." And then it would be up to us, right, to make that decision. But what I feel is happening here is that that deed restriction was placed on that property, that they couldn't build on it, and the planning board said no, and we're creating the same problem. All I'm asking for you to do is to verify it, but you're kind of dismissive, like what you did is ironclad, and I'm dismissive of you telling me something's ironclad without you looking into it.
We're certainly having to take on more legal work and more projects. I just, I'm, maybe we should start with, at least if you could get the, the address of the property, maybe we could start there as a way to begin the research into this property.
Well, that's probably how you should have started your answer, not with, "I don't see how this..."
I clearly believe it has nothing to do with this at all.
When you say that you don't understand how the two are related...
I don't.
Right? That the one could possibly have been overturned by the court, that's concerning to me.
I don't, I'm happy if it's the will of the body to research this issue, but I would once again say that whatever happened in that property has no bearing on this property. That's all I'll say. But I'm happy too, if it's the will of the body to research this property, I will do so, Counsel President.
That's...
And if we could, sorry, if you could give me the address and that's...
Yes, I said, I drive by tonight, and I'll send it to Lou. I don't have your, your...
That's okay. He'll certainly, we'll respond to you.
All right.
No, if you can, see me on, on the email?
Yeah, I'll text you as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
E, was this one of the properties that we received a letter on? We did some condemnation, and we received an email, I'm going to say, or a letter, that said basically, "You guys are condemning my property, but we're investing in the property, we're fixing it up, we're doing all of that. Can you guys please reverse that?" Is this that one?
No. This is the, if I recall correctly, the Pizza Hut location? Yeah, this is where the old Pizza Hut location is.
Okay. All right, that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Counsel President? I'm sorry, thank you.
Sorry, yes, Counsel Vice President Harris.
Yeah, just want to make a comment on H, the deed of easement and declaration of covenants for the Feronte tract on the Mettage and Meeting House battlefield. And just as the liaison to the Cultural Arts Commission, I just want to say I'm really pleased about this. It's just a nice pairing of what is being done, what we're hoping to do in transforming the old Feronte tract house, and then having this as the, this, in fact, looking at this as a historical site, and this deed of easement. I think it's going to be a really wonderful asset to the town, and a lot of credit goes to Walt Social for making this happen. And, you know, the Cultural Arts Commission is committed to certainly honoring the history with the Battle of Short Hills in the, in this property. So I just want to say I'm really pleased about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vice President. Councilman Patel.
Yeah, Counsel President, again, going back to C, I know there is a subdivision restriction, but my request to attorney is, if someone is buying the Lot 30 and 33, if they go in front of the planning or zoning board, giving a reason of hardship, will their application be approved? I have seen these cases, so I'm asking that question.
No, it cannot, based on this, on the restriction in the sale.
Restriction is for the subdivision, in the sense that they cannot attach another property and subdivide. What I'm saying, individual block, you know, I, because if I buy this property, I can say, you know, Lot 30, one application, Lot 33, another application. It's a smaller lot compared to what the neighborhood properties are, but I can easily call that as a hardship, because I own the property and I cannot build it, even though it doesn't satisfy the criteria. So my ask here is, can you please do the research and find out if there are similar lots that we have approved? Because I have the example, I don't want to give the address, but if you can do that research.
Councilman will certainly do the research and have you before the vote on Wednesday.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
For myself, I just wanted to clarify, item D, is this just up before us again, just because the block of lot numbers are being updated?
That's correct.
Just wanted to make sure, thank you. 14, from the Department of Planning and Engineering. A, resolution refunding senior resident permit fee. B, resolution refunding permit fee. C, resolution refunding tree maintenance bonds. D, resolution refunding cash performance bond. E, resolution approving amendment to fiscal years 2020, 2021, and 2022, community development block grant annual action plans. F, resolution refunding unused portion of developer escrow fees. G, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for Papayani Park Splash Park, $2,783,814. And H, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for Edison Township Sports Building, $10,787,000. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Counsel President?
Yes, Councilman Brecher.
C, for the tree maintenance bonds, can we get a list of all the properties that have tree maintenance bonds with a list of when they receive their C of O? Because this is another one of these where it's old, and what I'm afraid of is, we were told multiple times, we're going to get through all the old ones. And I almost feel like we're just bringing the old ones up one at a time, and then new ones are becoming now old ones, and we're never going to be caught up.
I understand the concern. These are from 2017, but I think, like, the ones that are within the two-year span now is really what we would be focusing on, because we want to make sure that we're going out to check them now, so it doesn't elapse past the two-year time period, and then it becomes automatic refundable.
Right, I'm just saying, every time that I decide to look and go through the backup, every time, it turns out that it's one of the older ones. So what I'm saying is, they're doing this work on the older ones, and the ones that we should be doing aren't being done, and we're not releasing that money, because we're going to wait until it becomes an old one, and then we give them their money back and the trees are all dead.
I think it doesn't get triggered, so to say, until they request the refund. So like, on these older ones, like, we're not saying, "Hey, these are old, like, let's refund it." It's the property owner saying, "Hey, I'm owed a refund by it, and now requesting for it."
Right, so, right, they obviously don't forget about it. It's a game, is what I call. And the administration should be a little bit sharper than to allow, you know, people to get away with bypassing our ordinance, by saying, "I'm not going to ask for it until the two-year period is up, and I'll wait till the third year, and then I'll get all the money back. This way, I don't have to plant, replant those couple of dead trees that are there." That's where I'm going. So it's a game, we've seen it, we've heard it, the administration told us they were taking care of it, and here I am, looking at it again.
Yeah, that's why I was recommending, like, the ones from now to two years prior, because then we can try to shortcut in that game, so to say. Shoot some ladders.
Right, I mean, that's where I was going. If we had, if we had a list, then we could monitor it ourselves if we would like, and we can question the administration and say, "Hey, wait, this is coming up, it's going to fall into the category of..."
To our business administrator, is it possible for us to get a list of tree maintenance bonds that have been authorized over the past year, two years?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, then I have, I'm going to say maybe some issues, I'm not sure, but G and H, and I know my counsel colleague sitting at the other end is going to be a little upset that I mentioned G. But my question with this is, the dollar amounts, right? Dollar amounts happen to be a lot larger than we thought they were. For the sports building, we were looking at, I believe it was a $5 million building, then it became a $12 million building, and something got pared back to make it a $10 million building, but I don't know what got pared back even. And then I noticed that we have money that is appropriated, so we have the money for this. But we have a list of where the money's coming from, and, you know, that's kind of a little bit of, I guess, a concern. Figures it doesn't open up when I hit it again. But there were items that said something like, you know, parks, maintenance, and we're allocating a maintenance portion of our, these are bonds, I guess, that we have that are out there, I assume, for the financing for this?
Capital improvement accounts.
Right, and I believe we bonded money for those. And like, I went back and I asked the mayor at the last meeting, Polanski Park, which is over by JP Stevens, I was told by the people in the county that they were going to get us money to help build a basketball court for our children. JP Stevens, all the kids use that after school. Then I was told by people in the county that they paved it, but I see that there's potholes in it. But I do know that we had money allocated under the prior administration for that park. Yet, when I see over here where all this money's coming from, how do I know it's not coming from the Polanski Park project to pay for, you know, these here?
Councilman Brecher, if I could clarify that. Part of the funding was from 2022 capital in here, and then others were from prior bond ordinances. However, with regard to Polanski Park, I believe what was discussed at the budget meeting was that that would be addressed as a larger project, because there were some design work and that needed to get done in order to get the courts done, so that would be for a future project. I don't, can't speak to what was done in the past, I can certainly look that up for you, exactly if there were any funds allocated prior to, but I believe that that was addressed at the budget meeting.
Yes, like, and I brought this up, our county commissioner, Rios, said that they were getting us money for Polanski Park, okay? I know our chairman, you know, I reminded him about it. But there was money allocated for it, because I was a councilman and worked with the past administration to put it into the bond, right? So I made sure the money was there, and now, I don't know, is it, is it still there? Because, let's see, like, you have $4 million for the rec department construction of a community center. I understand that, because we allocated funds for that. I understand that, because we allocated funds for that, that was a $4 million. Then you have 2.5 million for building construction and repairs. So where I'm going with that is you, you're taking that 2.5 million out, and now we're not going to be doing the repairs, because we're putting it into trying to pay for this building, that's twice as much as what you thought it was going to be. The Jets, right, you got the $1 million, that, right, that would belong there. The $39,000 for the engineering for Papani Park upgrades, I, I don't know that that was for that building. Building, building energy upgrades, I, I'm not even sure what we're doing energy-wise for that building, because we never got that full set for, for the building itself that showed whatever you're doing on the outside of the building, the inside. So I, is there any way the public can see what they're doing? Like, the Board of Ed, if you go down to their office, right, they have the renderings, they have drawings they'll show you. Here, we don't know, I don't know, the public doesn't know.
The report of the bid specifications, if I'm not mistaken, that were sent in that Dropbox?
Are they?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're, they're a little earlier on, because you expect all the drawings to be at, at the end.
Yeah, yeah.
Together, the, the interior drawings are on, like, page, not precise, but like, 750, whereas like, the, the latter ones that had the exteriors, like, the screenshots I shared with you, those were like, 1,700. So the interior ones are like midway through the bid package. I'll try to find the exact page for you.
Right, because they have, like, recreation, various improvements, like, 32,000. Does that mean we're not doing 32,000 worth of other improvements on these other parks? And, you know, the, the thing that I'm looking at here is that it's, it's $10 million. I haven't heard that it's a community center that I could take my grandson to to go play basketball. I've heard that it was only for the football and for cheerleaders, I, I heard that. I heard then, from somebody within your administration, that it was to have basketball and wrestling, but then I heard the basketball was taken out. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's kind of out there, and to spend $10 million for such a small group, you know, is, is kind of hard to digest. Like, what would we, if we're going, if the Jets, let's say, have 200 families, and we're going to do $10 million, but the soccer league has 2,000 students, we should be doing then like, 80 million for them. So where I'm going with it is, the 10 million just seems exorbitantly high, and we're taking money that wasn't allocated for this project. So what I'm looking for is like, what were you allocating these funds for?
So, prior-
Or what, what aren't you going to do that we were going to originally do?
We're not doing anything different. So realizing that this is the second time this has made it to the councils' dais, because the bids in the first portion of, when we went out to bid, they were much, much higher, about 14, 15 million. So we felt that, that was too high. So the prudent thing was to do, was to go back out to bid to see if there were more competitive pricing that we could, and reduce the cost. So we didn't change anything here. Just to clarify, this is a multipurpose facility. This is a township-run facility, so we're looking to, of course, involve all sports and activities throughout the township.
And so the soccer could use it?
Well, we have to work out the kinks in terms of the programming. I can't speak to that exactly, how the scheduling's going to work, but it's a multipurpose building.
Well, you can build a multipurpose building. This building is multipurpose building. The one next door is, there, is a multipurpose building, but that's strictly for the police department, right? This one here is for, like, the administration and everybody else. So the same thing with any kind of building. Buildings are multipurpose. But what do we have that tells us who can use it, who's going to use it, what's in there, what are we going to do with it? Like, a giant community center where, where I can take my mother, right, and she can go there and go play mahjong, because you have a little thing kind of going on? It's a good thing. And if you're going to tell me that's what you're building, then yes, I get $10 million. But if it's 10 million, and it's strictly just for, for one group, I'm just saying, I think that's excessive, when the money that you're taking, that you have allocated here, when you did your bonds, when you did your capital, you gave a list, you gave us a list of items you were going to do, right? And, and this council, and this body, and the past administration said, this is wonderful, and we all agreed to it. But now you're taking this money to make up the shortfall from the $5 million to the $10 million. So where I'm going is, what, what are we not getting that we were going to get? So somewhere along the way, you gave us a list, and the prior administration gave us a list, and you're borrowing an additional $5 million of that money. So I'm saying, what aren't we getting?
So, and, and I, I know this is becoming a back and forth, but I just want to clarify, these old accounts were cross-tacked to ensure that they were not allocated for other projects that were supposed to come to fruition. So all of these are old, old capital accounts that we've now dropped down from. Just to answer your question.
Right. But, but when an administration, whether it's yours or the prior one, comes to the council, they give you a list of all the projects, right? So you're-
And they're identified in the actual ordinance itself. So I can certainly provide that to you, if you'd like.
Well, and that, that's where I'm going. So, so we have this money that's in there, and it was allocated for something, so what are we not going to do? There's something that we're not doing, or somebody didn't do, and that's what I'm asking for.
I'm not aware of anything that we're not doing, that hasn't been done, but I can certainly provide you the capital ordinances for backup.
Okay.
I, I think I know where, where you're trying to get at. So recreation, equipment, and upgrades from 2018, right, that was A, B, and C that they were going to, to do?
Do.
Right. Have A, B, and C been done?
Correct.
Right.
Yes, that's, that's where I'm going.
And then what, what that difference would be, if there's a difference with A, B, and C being done, then it makes sense to take from that account because of excess, but making sure that A, B, and C were previously done. Am I understanding correctly?
That was perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any other, because I know that was the sports building.
That was it.
Splash Park?
Well, the Splash Park and the sports, Splash Park is, is the same relevance. And I know Joyce loves a Splash Park, but it's the same thing, where we're taking the funds from other areas. So I'm wondering, what did we tell the public back in 2019, we were going to give them, that we're not giving them in, in lieu of the Splash Park as well?
Thank you. And the interior drawings, page 710, which I'll reiterate afterwards.
I'll, I'll look it up. 710.
Yeah, approximately. But thank you. Councilwoman Shipman?
Oh, and Council President, because of, I'm, I'm going to speak on H first, because of the different biddings and amount and the stuff, because when the Mini Bville Center was put together, it was put together terrible, terrible, the worst ever. So it ain't cut so many corners till it makes you suspicious on other things. Because what happens then, if you build it the correct way, and spend the right of money, the right amount of money on a project, then you don't have to keep revisiting it. You come back later, we're a million, this one out, we need two more million to fix this one up, we need all those things. And as far as the Splash Park goes, I had budgeted it with the prior mayor at $5 million, so I, I'm looking at this, maybe it's not that big at all. You know, I had asked for two, but, okay, Councilman Brecher, I'll go with one, all right? But I'm just, I just questioned the amount of money, because I, a lot of places that I had researched back and forth, $5 million was just the, you know, the basic one. So if we're going to, even if we're going to get a small one, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, because it's actually doing stuff for the children of Edison, and not just grown-up stuff. And that's the, my plus with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And just to the point, the BA did provide the bid spec for that, which should have all the drawings, so I can share them with you as well. Just so you can see what the overall layout is.
Good, I hope, I hope good bricks and stuff, because you know, you can go into Mini Bville Center and see the basketball, and not see a bleacher or anything anywhere in sight. That's like, the poorest building put together ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, I just want to clarify, we do have to go with the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. So we have to go with the lowest bidder here in this instance.
Thank you. Councilwoman Patel?
Thank you, Council President. Couple of questions here. It's good that, you know, finally we are moving the, the request, my council request on this Splash Park. I'm happy on that. The, on the line edge, the atom edge, I think it's two council meetings ago, we were going back and forth on the, the bleacher movement, and, you know, is this the credit part of, will be getting the credit as part of this contract, or this bid, if it goes through?
Are we talking about the Splash Park or the sports center?
The sports building. I think you're talking about the, with the bleachers being moved as part of the turf field versus this-
Yes, and that was removed from the, from the sports building bid specs. It was about $100,000.
Did it go down to $1,000?
It went down just, just a little bit, just the difference of what the, what we were covering now with changing the bleachers.
Okay. I think we paid $94,000, $95,000 to move or to replace something. But, you know, what's the timeline on both these projects? I'm, you know, we, we are talking about capital projects for a long, long now. I'm, I'm curious, because we are approving this all along, all the capital projects. What's the timeline for Splash Park, and what's the timeline for the sports center? In a year, six months, two years?
We're hoping by, some of these by the spring, especially the, the Splash Parks specifically, you know, the sports building.
I think in the bid spec, I recall 460 days. I'll, I'll double-check that. I don't recall the Splash Park off the top of my head, though.
Okay. So roughly, we can say, you know, with a change order, et cetera, an year for the sports building. And for the Splash Park rally, we can hope by spring?
Yes, and we're hoping to break ground on some of these projects in the fall.
Okay. Good. Okay. Happy to see this moving forward. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. From the 15, from the Department of Public Works, A, resolution to release street opening escrows, B, resolution awarding contract purchase order for three Panasonic tough books, $19,350, C, resolution authorizing contract purchase order for one GMC Sierra 3500, $48,537, and D, resolution amending vendor name from resolution R082-022023. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
A question about the street opening?
Yes, Councilman Brecher?
Yes, I, I looked at the draw, I, I looked at the pictures and that, you know, they, they show that the seeming's done correctly and everything. But I, I thought that when we open up a street, we're supposed to, if it's even an old street, we're supposed to pave from the curb to the center line.
Do you know which one, off the top, which one it was?
Are you referring to the ordinance for the public utility and what they have to do?
Yes. Like, so I'm, I'm looking at these, like, these streets look like they're patched. You know, I'm not disputing that they're patched, I'm not even disputing that they're, around the perimeter is patched. But I, I thought we had an ordinance that said that, like, the one looks like it was a gas main brought in, or a water main, maybe, that was brought in, but that we're supposed to pave, like, the property to the center line of the street, is what I thought it read.
What I would just confirm is whether the, this is regarding a private ownership, and this was work that they had to do, versus a public utility. So I just need to confirm that.
If, if you could just check on that.
On the, on the front, I think I know which one you're talking about. It's a very long strip.
Yes, it was, yes.
Yeah, on the front page, it says new construction sidewalk, apron, and curb. So I don't think it's part of the utility ordinance that you're referencing.
Okay.
Correct. And one of them is a sewer. There was a sewer issue here.
Oh, okay. Right.
Like a rotor ruder, for instance. So this is regarding a private, private issue that happened in someone's home.
Okay, right. Look, I thought it was water, because they did our water up by us, and they did our gas. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Council President, I wanted to ask about the tough books. Are, we going to purchase them, or we're going to then go back again and pay to have information put on them that is substantive of the department that's going to have those books?
I thought they were being fitted out, because they're being used for diagnostic purposes.
Okay.
At the garage. I think they told them already what the software required for it, but-
Okay.
I'll confirm for you.
Thank you.
16, from the Department of Recreation, A, resolution refunding park fee, B, resolution waiving of permit fee for nonprofit organization, and C, resolution authorizing the township to purchase snacks through an interlocal service agreement with the Edison Board of Education, $200,000. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. 17, from the Department of Water and Sewer, A, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for sewer pump rentals, $750,000, and B, resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for sewer pump rentals, $107,113. And just, just for clarification, item B is specifically, specifically towards a generator versus the item A. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. 18, from the Chief of Fire, A, approval of volunteer firefighters. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. 19, from the Township Clerk, A, resolution approving 2023, 2024 license term renewal for ABC Bottle LLC, B, resolution authorizing issuance of new plenary retail consumption liquor license to Yayan Liquors LLC, C, resolution authorizing issuance of a new plenary distribution liquor license to Canal &amp; Charn, Inc., and D, resolution approving 2023, 2024 license term renewal for RTC Restaurant Corporation. Any questions, concerns, or comments? Seeing none. 20, from the Councilmember of the Planning Board, Councilman Patel.
So we had our planning board meeting on July 17, where we approved P5243, P5249, P5236, and we approved extensions on P7, 2019, P14, 2019, P6, 2021, and P5240. One of the major items in discussion was the master plan, and we had a lot of, we heard a lot of good feedback from the residents. And I think the chairman of the planning board plans to continue the discussion on August 14, so if anyone plans to attend, that will be the day. And we're hoping to limit the time to five minutes, at least that's what I heard, so that we can have more people participate into the discussion. In terms of new business, that was case P22, 2022, Just Nation LLC, located at 271 Meadow Road, which was carried, is going to be carried over to August 14. The only case that was heard was case P09, 2023, Garden State Building, LP2, 425, and 475, Ritter and Center Drive, and 82 Sunfield Ave, block number 395.01, lot number 24, 26, 27. This wasn't in RR, RRRD zoning, and they were seeking a C2 variance, and they pretty much met, met every single criteria. They originally thought they would not meet enough parking lots, but they had the seven electric parking lot, which allowed them to double that up. And they met everything, and they passed the planning board. And I did have some comments on the master plan, but I think Council President wants to discuss this a little later, so we will hold it up to that.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. We move on to discussion items, and to my right, let's start with Councilman Brecher.
Question. The budget presentation, some residents asked me if, when's that going to be available online?
We'll post it up as soon as, I'll just double-check to see if it has or hasn't.
Okay.
But if it hasn't, we'll do it immediately.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a copy of the youth sports funding formula? There was one that was put together, and I, I, it, it's, it is available, but, but for whatever reason, remember we talked about Microsoft? I, I can't go back and look that far back with my Microsoft email for some reason. So if you could just email me that funding formula that we set up?
Sure. You do have a laptop or a tablet from the township, do you?
Yes, I do have that. Will it load onto that?
It should, yes.
All right, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll check that tonight. I'll text you if it still doesn't load.
Please. By the way, the presentation is on the website, it's on the page, on the news and community information, on that banner.
So it's up now?
Right in the center, yes.
Perfect, thank you. Perfect, thank you. There is, there's a company down by the water, the Yanusi Group, and we talked about them, I believe, at the last meeting. There was an agreement that we had, the mulch pile was four hundred and seventy-five feet, I made that up, tall originally, and they had to reduce it by half. And I'm wondering, can, can we get an update on that to see what it was originally? And what the current height is there with the mulch pile?
Was this a code enforcement issue?
No, this was us selling them the land, so, so what happened was, we sold them a piece of land for virtually nothing. Under the condition that they lowered the mulch pile, because the mulch was on our property and it was catching fire all the time. So they had to keep it down below, so I'd like to know what the total height was before and the height that they're at now. And the final one is, there, there's a lot of people talking about the animal shelter. They're saying that we don't have someone that has a license, but we have to have a license. Do, do we have a license for the animal shelter?
Are you referring to the ACOs? We do have licensed ACOs, animal control officers in the animal shelter.
Right, who runs the animal shelter? So it's, they're supposed to have a, a license and three years' experience, or two, I think it was two years' experience, they were all saying. Did, do we have that criteria?
The ACOs do fit the criteria.
The person in charge doesn't then?
The person in charge, I believe, um, also is obtaining the ACO.
Yeah, if I may, um, I, I'm gonna be actually speaking about this during my comments, but just to answer your question, I met with her, uh, that's Tina Passakinsky. And she does have her ACO license.
Right, but she does, she have the state license to run the facility, that was?
That is exactly what, um, Council Vice President was referring to, she does.
Oh, so she has all her licenses. Okay, perfect, thank you. Yes.
Sorry, I came in late, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brecher. Council Vice President Harris?
Yes, so, um, having seen an awful lot posted on social media about the Edison Animal Shelter. Things that were very disturbing to me, and as having been a dog owner for forty-four consecutive years now, since nineteen seventy-nine. I was very concerned about this, hearing about very bad conditions and not having enough supplies. And, you know, as one who still cries at the Humane Society ads where Sarah McLachlan is singing. I decided it was time for me to take a look myself, because there was a lot of information out there that was, was of concern to me. So today, I made an unannounced visit to the facility. And Tina, Tina Passakinsky, who took over in June, um, was there, and she took me on a tour of the shelter, and then we spoke. It was about a forty-five minute visit that I had. And I was very impressed and relieved, quite honestly, with the condition of the shelter. The shelter was clean, they are absolutely overrun with pets right now. It's, uh, they have, I think, eighty-six cats, and she gave me the, I had asked her to give me the, uh, the information about the dogs. Eighty-six cats, twenty-three dogs, um, and there was one dog that was adopted on Saturday. They have, uh, they had gotten nine huskies in, this was from a hoarding situation in Piscataway. There were nine huskies, and I think one, uh, one was, was pregnant. So the puppies were, I think the puppies were adopted, there are still four huskies left, a female, that's three, three males that are one and a half. So they are busting at the seams, there's no question about it, but the facility was clean. It was, the, there is a isolation part of the facility, which is where there are three dogs right now who are recovering from parvo. I think they're, they don't have it anymore, but they're keeping them in isolation just the same. That was in the midst of being cleaned when I was there. But in touring the facility, everything looked like it was in place, everything looked clean. In terms of supplies, they're doing fine on supplies, there's no, there is not a shortage. And so, as I said before, I was relieved at the, at the condition, but they are busting at the seams. And Tina told me that there's some talk in the possibility of trying to get a new building. And I don't know, um, Business Administrator, is, is there any information you can give us on that?
Sure, we, we're talking about a conceptual design of, um, adding on to the building, uh, not just the outside space, but inside space. So that we're a more welcoming environment to those that are seeking adoption and, um, or seeking our services at the shelter. So we're, this administration is looking to expand on that. On that note, we are trying to also, um, take some of that responsibility with the, of the five towns that are, were, were, are responsible for the shelter. So as the mayor presented last week at the budget meeting, he, he is having conversations, we're having proactive conversations with those, uh, shared services agreements as they're coming up. To say, hey, we, not only administrative costs have maintained really and not changed, we're also looking to make some capital improvements. So, uh, potentially, if, uh, we don't get that in return, there may be some, we certainly wouldn't want to turn away from any of our neighboring towns. But we're looking to get some contribution from them. So, um, yes, we are looking to make larger capital improvements at the shelter.
Okay, I had asked Tina, the, this influx of so many pets, is this because of the shared services? And she said, no, it's actually a situation of, now that the pandemic is, you know, over, and people are going back to work. A lot of people who adopted during the pandemic, when they were homebound, have, uh, have now found, unfortunately, that they can no longer take care of these pets because they've gone back into offices, so this is, uh, this is a tragedy. But, um, I, I want to assure the public out there that I was extremely satisfied with what I saw at the shelter. I think it's being, it's being run as well as it can with this, uh, you know, with this overcrowding situation. And I would encourage people, if you're looking for a pet, the adoption fee, at least for dogs, I think for cats it's less, but for dogs, is a small, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. She told me that's the lowest in the state. So, um, in any case, I, I just wanted to comment on that because I'd been very, very worried about what I've seen. And I, I came away feeling relieved and satisfied. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Vice President Harris. Councilman Patel?
So one of the things I wanted to discuss was the website. I've been talking to Sonia regarding, or BA regarding to it, and she has informed me that it's around fifty thousand dollars for the update. I truly believe this is an important step that the town should take. This website represents what we present to the world. When someone visits our city, the first thing they'll look at is our website, and if our website is a mess, that kind of tells the visitor something. The website is really underutilized, first of all. I believe this minor investment of fifty thousand dollars will hopefully lead us with a central site that will allow us to inform our residents with everything that they need to know, including, let's say, showcasing the township progress. The projects that we're doing, the improvements that we're making, we can have a section of the website that will show that. We can, also, one of the things that we need to do is increase the security. At this moment, our website is just a hodgepodge of different changes and urine IT, that's a real big security risk. And that is something that we need to address. The third thing is, we should also be looking to streamline all the services that we provide. Submitting forms and looking for information, which leads to the Oprah request. All of this can be streamlined through the website, that will hopefully decrease the Oprah requests for our clerk and allowing them to focus their time on other things that needs to be done. And this will also help us with decision-making. The website can be utilized as data analytics, we can gather information from the residents as to what they want. And we can have a central location, I mean, the master plan is great, but it's a document that we know wasn't updated for thirty years. We need something that's more fluid, something that we can gather and keep track of. And that also leads me to the next point, the master plan should be presented front and center at the website. And the master plan has a great task list at the end, we can track that on the website itself as to see what progress we are making as a town. And all of this can be done for fifty thousand dollars, and I don't think that's a lot of money to be asked. And it's a great, um, plus points that we can get from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. Councilman Patel?
Thank you, Council President. And I'm kind of going back to several meetings ago, what I brought to administration attention, I want to get the follow-up on that. Speed hump on the Farm Haven. I know there were four, the three were removed, one is still there in front of someone's driveway. So can we get that addressed? Farm Haven speed hump. And we have probably, you know, a dozen emails back and forth on that, so again, that needs to be corrected quickly. Second one is the speed limit sign on Grove and Calvert. I believe the, the flashing light was installed at the wrong place, it was on Calvert, not on Grove. The ask was, how do we control the speed on the Grove Avenue, because that's an accident-prone area? Again, if you can please look into that again, I sent probably six, six, seven emails on this as well. The third one is Compton Street cleaning, almost like month and a half, no progress on that. If you can please follow up, because I'm going to ask this again in the next council meeting.
Can you repeat the street, please?
Compton, Compton Street.
Crown Prince?
Yep, Compton.
Compton.
Yeah, uh, question on HDL rollout, uh, we just spoke about the, how we can ease, uh, residents' access to the township resources. That includes the information, et cetera. And I think the whole purpose of HDL was to bring that transparency, do we know where it's at? Can we get some metrics, data metrics, like in terms of who is using, how many requests, who we are serving? And really, are we using that up to the potential that we invested in?
Sure.
Amazon noise, there are, I think, you know, two dozen emails, and I don't see any response anywhere, I don't know what's happening there. Is there any action plan on that? Amazon noise?
I have not heard anything, um, I can certainly follow up the chief if there's been issues with Amazon. But I know that our planning and engineering folks have been really aggressive in holding them accountable. Ie improvements and shrubs, and shrubs, and things of that nature, so they've been active out there. So, um, I have not heard any complaints thus far.
We have a lot of emails from the residents coming back and forth on that. So again, I know Councilman Brecher might be aware of this, but again, this is something, and of course, the Council President. We can't ignore those requests, again, we need to be on top of it. Oak Tree Road, there is a signal on, I think it's a Whitehall and Oak Tree Road, the two houses are demolished. I have not seen any plan on the council, I know it is a county road. And I heard from a resident that, that road will be paved all the way from Wood Avenue to New Door. But again, this is a main road, traffic road, if you can get that early heads up, and to the resident, that will be helpful.
Sure, I know part of Oak Tree Road will be done by the county, and we've sent them basically a list of, uh, priority. They can't do the entire thing this year, but they certainly will be moving forward with a portion of Oak Tree Road.
Perfect, thank you. And a question, actually, this is maybe a question to our attorney, uh, someone renting an apartment. And the resident, you know, he's living there, his ceiling fell down because of the rain. He's trying hard to work with the management company, they are giving very hard time to the resident. He moved to the hotel, time being, but with the family, it's very difficult. So he reached out and said, what we can do, I said, maybe our health department can go and check the situation. Uh, but again, I don't know the, the protocol, so I'm, I'm asking your advice, how do we direct this residence in the right direction? What needs to be done here?
Is this named water damage, is that right?
Yes, in the unit.
I would think that the health department might be the only reasonable place that could look at it. Health Department, code enforcement, I think might be another idea, I think.
Between the two departments, if you could just send me the address?
Perfect, I'll send the address, and I will, if you can guide on that. That's it, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. Councilwoman Shipman?
Okay, um, I'll just start off and I'll, I'll do this one real quick. Uh, they said the person that's in head of the, um, shelter is still working on her license. But if the other people around her, I told the people surrounded have licenses, then it's kind of okay. But they said she's working online to improve her and get her license together. I just wanted to make sure if that's true or not, because I'm hearing different stories. Somebody says she has a license, somebody says she's online, uh, trying to get her license at this particular point.
Councilwoman Shipman, uh, she does have her license, and she was wearing an animal control shirt.
Okay, no, I, I want to make that clarification for the people out there, so, all right. So, and I also asked for the Cultural Arts Committee ordinance. I asked for that, and I thought I would get it tonight, but maybe I'll get it sometime soon. I just wanted to see the ordinance and say what it entails, because, um, it was trying to be stated before. I know all about the Faulkner Act, because this is not my first rodeo. I've been involved in politics in Edison's way back in, I guess, the seventies, that's how long I've been involved. So I kind of know how things go, all right? So, um, a user-friendly, uh, website is what I would believe in. So that, because some people have problems navigating websites that they're not used to. And, um, the Human Relations Committee, um, it wants to know, I mean, they're gonna have, they're gonna have a meeting. But because they're not recognized as the rest of the committees are, but the Human Relations Committee. And, um, I can go from town to town and tell you what town is Faulkner and what town is not. So, uh, we're missing out on the Human Relations Committee. So if I can get the Cultural Arts Committee actual ordinance that states and says what the mission is and what direction that it goes in, at all, and, uh, I can get some direction from the Human Relations Committee because they feel like they're an outcast, that they're not being recognized, even though they're recognizing other neighboring towns. And I'd like to find out a little more about P S E N G and the streets that they're digging up. So that, uh, we don't both dig up the same streets and we wind up paying the most money for them and they wind up taking a walk. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and for myself, I know that I had, uh, written, I was going to comment on the master plan. But I would like to see if there are any revisions of, that the planning board or the consultant are, uh, considering changing before making any final comment on that. Are there any other questions?
Counselor, oh, excuse me, Council President, one other thing. After I'm on the planning board, and they would like to know, um, with the lot that's across the street that we were going to, we were designating as a park, they want to know in the community, why is the whole thing paved at the, um, Stewart's? You know, they said it was brand-new paving all of a sudden, and they said they don't know about permits or anything. But it just, all of a sudden, they said it was paved from beginning to end. So can you, if you can give me some information on, if you can give me some information on how the Stewart's lot became paved from beginning to end? I know we don't own it, but I think Beautiful Edison leases it. So if, if Beautiful Edison leases it, is there some information we can get? Because I don't want to be telling people, I don't want to tell people that, well, you know, this lot is designated for a park and benches and all that. You know, trying to keep the area closer to like a, a town center like they have in Metuchen. But all of a sudden, the people call and say, it's paved from, from beginning to end. And that asphalt there, um, they're already having drainage problems. So that, that's killing them off more, so it's making more puddles come down that way. So I just, I'm sorry, I didn't say it earlier, but that's what they were addressing at that time. And that, that is in the master plan, I guess, and Jade Dynasty, those, you know, all those places, friendly places that, you know, we're supposed to, you know, do for our master plan, like we're supposed to. It's been a while since we did it, but we're supposed to be improving Edison, not killing it off, is what I'm saying, you know, thank you.
Um, just to comment on the, uh, the Stewart's lot, um, I'm not exactly, I, I know that it's not Beautiful Edison that is leasing it right now. But I guess that's the best I can say, I'm not sure the entity is named that.
I know, but I'm not saying it.
Council President? Oh, I was going to, sorry. Councilman Brecher and then?
Councilman Brecher, and then Councilman Patel.
Yes, um, going back, one of the residents is just, they, they sent me a text. They said that, um, the meeting for the budget presentation is not online, that your slideshow from the budget presentation is online, but there isn't one question asked of anybody on this council or any answers to anybody on the council. Is, is the resident correct, or are we, is, is the video there?
It's just the, uh, budget presentation, the slideshow, so I'll double-check for you about the meeting itself, the, the video.
Right. I mean, that should be posted. Our mayor used to sit up here with his little camera, right? And, and do everything live all the time. Um, if we can get that posted by tomorrow, I'd appreciate it. Otherwise, I'm going to become like the Christo reporter guy, looking at all the things we're doing at the town all day long. That's what I'll do with my day. Uh, but I believe that people have a right to see the questions that were asked by, by their council that they elected. And for us not to show it, I think is wrong. It lacks transparency. Um, and I don't believe it was an oversight. So I, I'd like to see that up there by tomorrow. The other question, just because Joyce brought that up, the township didn't pay to have that Stewart's parking lot done, correct?
No, I, I don't know.
Right? That was done by a building owner or somebody, but it wasn't part of anything we did?
Not that I'm aware of.
Sonia, do you, we, we, we wouldn't pave that parking lot, correct? The Stewart's?
I don't know that we would. I can't, I'll confirm with you how it was.
We wouldn't?
There, there's, it's not our property.
Right, that, that's where I'm going. I'd just like to confirm that we, that Township Edison didn't pave a private lot, that's all.
No, we would not do that.
All right.
We didn't, I'm sorry, we did not.
Thank you. That would be a Council President. Thank you.
And, uh, Councilman Patel? Councilman Patel?
Sorry about that. Uh, what Councilwoman Joyce said did remind me. I actually wanted to ask the public, because I know we have a lot of IT, uh, people in Edison. We have a lot of people who are in technology. If anyone's interested in helping us create the UI, the user interface, that we can present, I would love to start a committee specifically for website, uh, please email me at npatel@edisonnj.gov. Do not expect any quick moments. There is a lot of time back right now. So maybe in two months' time, I'm hoping to start this committee. So if anyone's interested, again, npatel@edisonnj.gov, send me just a introduction saying that you're interested and present to me, you know, what exactly you'll be offering. And also to the high school students, I know a lot of you are learning to code, and if you guys want to participate in the process of making a website and, you know, what goes into it, I would love to have you too. So if a parent is listening to this, please email me at npatel@edisonnj.gov. Thank you. And, uh, maybe September time, I'm hoping to start this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patel.
Oh, Council, uh, President?
Yes, Councilwoman Shipman?
Yes, I was looking into that already, and I asked teenagers, I have a group that wants to go in and teach, uh, seniors at the senior building and other place, other places where they have IT materials. Seniors would like to go in and like, for the young students from the school that want to volunteer to show them how to navigate the actual one. It's not the part of putting it together, it's the part of them being, having, able to access the information, okay? That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you very much. At this moment, I get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting stands adjourned.